Welcome to the Pinal County Board of Supervisors January 22, 2025 Special Session Meeting. So today is a work session for the most part where there is a decision to be made at the end of the day, on the end of the agenda, on a hearing officer. But first up is a presentation from the Sun Corridor MPO on the safety. Well, let's see, who's going to come up first? Tara's going to come up first. So we have a countywide safety plan that we've put out there. Sun Corridor and our planning transportation groups have gotten a lot of money and done a lot of good things here over the last 10 years, but let's hear from them about all the good things they've done.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, I'm Tara Harmon, Transportation Planning Supervisor with the Development Services Department. And this morning, I'm excited to introduce to you Ms. Irene Higgs, Executive Director of the Sun Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization, and Michael Blankenship from Greenlight Traffic Engineering. They are here to present to you the 2024 update to the Pinal County Strategic Transportation Safety Plan, which was originally completed in 2019. As you will hear in their presentation, over the past five years, the Pinal County region has recorded over 22,000 crashes that have led to 360 deaths. This plan will update, this plan update will provide a regionally focused framework for reducing fatal and serious injury crashes in Pinal County, striving for zero deaths because one is way too many. So now I will turn it over to Irene for a bit of history about the plan and how it originally came about.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara. Good morning, Supervisor Miller, Chairman, and Vice Chairman McClure, and Board Members. As Tara said, I'm Irene Higgs. I'm the Executive Director for the Sun Corridor Metropolitan Planning Organization, also as known as the MPO. So as you know, we put a slide in here. Pinal County is very unique. It is divided into three transportation planning organizations. The Sun Corridor MPO, the Maricopa Association of Governments, also known as MAG, and the Central Arizona Governments, also known as CAG. When the MPO was first formed in 2014, we completed a safety study for just the MPO region for the Sun Corridor MPO. And MAG and CAG also had completed safety studies. These safety plans all had different visions and goals. Pinal County staff came to me and asked me for their assistance to have one unified safety plan for all of Pinal County. So in 2017, I worked with the Maricopa Association of Governments, Central Arizona Governments, Arizona Department of Transportation, Federal Highways Administration, and Pinal County, and received eligibility to do one unified safety plan for all of Pinal County. Today, we will provide you with an update to the 2024 study and highlight some of our successes over the past 10 years. A special thank you to Michael Blankenship and staff from Greenlight Traffic Engineering, Jason Bonchin, Deputy Director and Project Manager from the Sun Corridor MPO, Tara Harmon, Pinal County Project Manager, all the cities, towns, police departments, Sheriff's Department, and DPS for their participation. And now it's my privilege to introduce Michael Blankenship.
Thank you, Irene. Good morning, Supervisors. I'll be throwing a lot of numbers at you in these slides. One thing to keep in mind, these aren't numbers, these aren't statistics, these are people, people's lives, their families, their friends, their neighbors that are impacted by these crashes that we're going to be talking about. Tara already highlighted these numbers, but I want to really highlight that 360 people that died in traffic crashes over the five-year period that we studied here in the county. That's between one and two people every single week of those 260 weeks over that five-year period. Every week, one or two people died on average in a traffic crash in the county. Those are crazy statistics, very tragic that that many people are dying. And it's not just a Pinal County problem, it's statewide, it's nationwide. But just keep that in mind that these are people that we're talking about here. Wanted to point out right up front that this safety plan, even though it's for the county and it's paid for by ADOT's federal safety funds, it qualifies the county and all the agencies within the county to pursue SS4A grant money, Safe Streets and Roads for All. This was initiated three years ago as part of the last infrastructure bill, federal bill. A billion dollars each year is available nationwide specifically for safety projects. And this plan sets you up as a county and the local agencies within the county to go after some of that money. And we're not talking just little bits of money. They're allowing $25 million per project. So we're talking big infrastructure construction type of projects to make some improvements out there. Would highly encourage the county and its local agencies to pursue that money. So everything in this safety plan will hit all of the criteria needed to go after that SS4A fund, funding. I want to point out that the county also received some SS4A planning funds last year, and they'll be using that money to add on to and supplement the findings of this county safety plan update. Oh, another thing to keep in mind with SS4A money that makes it nice for counties and cities, state DOTs can't go after that billion dollars. Usually, most of the federal funding, state DOTs are eligible and they take up, you know, a big share of landing that grant money. State DOTs can't go after this money. You can go after the money and use it on state routes, which might be something to consider, but the application has to come from a non-state DOT agency. As part of the safety plan, promoting a safety culture, not just within our planning and engineering community, but also within the public itself. So several public outreach events were held throughout the last year or so. We had over 300 folks that came out to some of these public outreach events, and we tried to spread them out throughout the county. And you can see some of them there that are highlighted. We've got two additional public events that will be coming up. I want to say it's in February that those will be scheduled to highlight the findings of the safety study. And then obviously, we presented to various TAC and Executive Boards in CAG, MAG, and Sun Corridor MPO, in addition to the Board of Supervisors here. As part of that public outreach, we did public surveys, both online and handing out hard copies of these surveys at those public outreach events. Over the six-month period that we had the survey online, got nearly 600 responses. We also received as part of that public survey, online comments where they could go directly to a map and pinpoint a specific intersection or segment of road and give us a comment on their exact reason why they think it's a safety concern. And that's some good information that all of the agencies within the county can use to look at those survey results. But just some of the highlights of what the public is telling us, over half the folks feel unsafe out there on the roads. The folks that feel the least safe are vulnerable road users, so pedestrians, bicyclists, the elderly, the disabled, motorcyclists, anybody in those categories that isn't in a vehicle that gets hit, it's going to be pretty severe, the consequences. Some of the behaviors that the public mentioned that they see on a routine basis, distracted drivers, inattentive, frustrated and angry, the road rage. In terms of the top five safety concerns, you can see the bar graph there. Speeding is right there at the top of the list. Eighty-seven percent of the respondents say speeding is the issue. Tailgating, texting and talking on the phone. Another part of the safety plan, and this is one of the requirements to meet the SS4A funding requirements, to go after that billion dollars a year that I mentioned, is to do an equity analysis. Basically, where are the disadvantaged communities within the county, and how is this safety plan going to help address some of the issues in those disadvantaged areas? So when we look at the fatal and serious injuries, injury crashes, there were over 1,000. Over 80% of those occurred in these disadvantaged areas within the county. So in the crosshatching here shows those disadvantaged areas.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because is that how we determine where to spend dollars is on the number of fatalities?
Excellent question. So sometimes. So when we're looking at getting federal HSIP money, Highway Safety Improvement Program money that flows from the feds through ADOT, and we'll highlight those in a minute, yes, for that money, it only looks at fatal and serious injury crashes. So if you...
That's not being very proactive.
I totally agree with you. Totally agree. And in ADOT's defense, and it's not just ADOT, it's kind of the federal regs too, but ADOT is looking at ways in the future to be more proactive and look at predictive crash, if an intersection has certain elements about it, the likelihood is we're going to have certain crashes there. They are looking at that, but right now, that is not taken into account.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to, if any of you want to ask a question, if it's all right, if we can just interrupt as we're going through it.
Yes, I'd appreciate doing it that way.
Anybody.
So for clarification, our roads are not that deadly, that of those 360, I think more than half of those are on I-10, which have nothing to do with Pinal County. On our surface streets, it's not a bloodbath out there.
Is that an accurate statement?
It's somewhat accurate, and we're going to get into statistics here, but you're right. A lot of these crashes are on ADOT facilities. You are right. And we'll specifically talk about I-10 here in a second.
All right.
So, no, I would not say there's a bloodbath on our city streets, but we do have a lot of it. In fact, the majority of the pedestrian fatalities are occurring off of the high-speed ADOT facilities and within the city limits. That's a good point, yep. Getting back to your question, so the HSIP does only look at fatal and serious. However, the SS4A funding that I mentioned does not require you just to look at the fatal and serious injury. In fact, what it's going to allow you to do is projects and strategies that were identified in this county safety plan can feed right into that because it's been identified based on crashes, based on agency feedback, based on the public comments. These are the hotspots, regardless of whether we've had a lot of fatals or serious injuries, and that's what we want to concentrate on. So you can use SS4A funding for things other than just where fatals have occurred. So the crosshatched are the disadvantaged areas, and then what we've highlighted with the diamonds and the kind of shaded red segments are the priority intersections and priority corridors where they line up in terms of where the disadvantaged areas are. There were nearly 100 projects, potential projects identified in the plan, 38 of them fall within these disadvantaged areas. So the next few slides, we're going to get back into some of those numbers, which aren't numbers, they're people, but a couple of caveats. So we looked at the most recent five years of crash data when the plan began, which was January 2018 through December of 2022. We looked at crash data specifically pulled from ADOT's crash database. So these are only reported crashes. There are other crashes that do occur that don't get reported for whatever reason. I will say that the county and the agencies within the county, for the most part, do a great job of getting their crash reports sent up to ADOT and into this system. But if the crash reports aren't getting into the ADOT database, they're not going to show up in the data we're going to present here. So here, we're showing crashes by severity level from no injury, basically property damage only, offender bender, all the way up to fatal crashes, and how many of those types of crashes occur within each of the agencies within the county. So we pulled all the tribal boundaries and data, the incorporated areas. We pulled two unincorporated areas at the request of the county, Santan Valley and Arizona City. When you, the Pinal County numbers that you see here down towards the bottom, that would be all the crashes within Pinal County that aren't happening in all of those other agencies within this table. So basically, unincorporated Pinal County excluding Santan Valley and Arizona City. Couple things I'll point out here. Of those 22,000 crashes, highest number are in the unincorporated parts of the county. 5,600 of those 22,000 crashes are in the county. As Supervisor Sertie said, a lot of those are on ADOT facilities. In fact, of the 22,000 crashes here, about half of the crashes are on ADOT facilities, I-10, State Route 87. It's not to say the ADOT roads aren't safe, but that's where we're seeing a lot of the crashes. And a lot of that's driven by the higher traffic volumes and higher speeds on those state routes. Half of the fatals, almost half of the fatals, are on the state system. You mentioned I-10. Fifteen percent of the crashes, 15% of the fatals are on I-10 through the county. And that's a pretty big number. And what stood out to me with that number when we looked at it closer is typically on an interstate high speed, you would expect most of the crashes are single-vehicle runoff the road. About half of the fatals on I-10 were that, runoff road. But about half of them were rear-end and head-on crashes on a high-speed interstate facility with no intersections. Again, that's very striking to me. Of the 5,600 crashes in unincorporated county, 132 were fatal. So, you know, the bulk of the fatals are in the unincorporated boundaries. Another thing I should point out, these crashes are within that agency's boundaries, not necessarily that agency's roads. For example, the city of Casa Grande had 3,800 crashes. That doesn't mean all of them were on the city streets. Again, a lot of those are on ADOT facilities.
Excuse me?
Yes.
I represent, you know, city of Maricopa, District 1, and Hidden Valley Thunderbird Farms. So when I see Ochjin, Gila River, and city of Maricopa, you're looking at over 5,000 crashes there. Would I consider Gila River and Maricopa the 347 for the most part? Because that's where most of our accidents do occur. How do I break it down for my constituents, what these actual accidents, because when I see Gila River right away, I think 347.
Yep.
In Maricopa, I see 347.
So it would be 347 in Maricopa, and it would be 347 within the county boundary. So when it gets up on the northern end there where a lot of the crashes are, that's in Maricopa County and wouldn't be reflected in this.
Okay.
So it's only the portions of those agencies within the county's boundaries.
Okay.
And you mentioned the Gila River Indian community. That is, it's the third highest number of crashes that we're seeing here by agency, and it's the second highest fatal crashes by agency, 60 fatals. Again, a lot of that on I-10 and the state routes that run through the Gila River Indian community.
So it's all the Gila River communities, spread out everywhere?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And while we're on that and the topic of I-10 running through the Gila River Indian community, kudos to every single person in the agency that was involved in the widening that's happening out there now, because that's where a lot of those fatals on I-10 are occurring, in that neck-down area of I-10 where there's only two lanes in each direction. May have to squint at this one. A lot of small numbers here to get it all into one table. So this is taking the same agencies from the previous table, but showing the crash types. So are you seeing a lot of left-turn crashes, rear-end, single-vehicle, which are typically those runoff-the-road crashes? And it basically follows what we typically see. So in the more urban areas, let's say in the cities, Casa Grande, you're going to see a lot of intersection-type crashes, rear-end, left-turn angle. Whereas out in the county, unincorporated county, the biggest number is going to be those single-vehicle crashes. 2,300 of the 5,600 county crashes are single-vehicle. And those are usually runoff the road, and they either roll over or they hit something, a tree, not that we have a lot of trees in Arizona, but a signpost, a power pole, they hit something. And a lot of times in those single-vehicle crashes, folks aren't wearing seat belts. And it's not a good combination, run off the road and roll over, not wearing a seat belt. You're usually thrown either out of the vehicle or around in the vehicle, and it usually So based on the crash data analysis, stakeholder input from the county, the cities, the tribes, these were the emphasis areas that were identified in this safety plan. That doesn't mean the other types of crashes and factors aren't important, but if the county and the local agencies concentrate on these five areas, and there's really seven areas because we hedged our bets a little on the behavior and threw a bunch of things in there, so speeding, impaired driving, not wearing the seat belt. But if you concentrate your funds and resources on these five emphasis areas, you can really have an impact on driving those 360 fatalities down. These are the ones that really stood out in terms of fatal and serious injuries. And I will say this on the seat belts, half of the fatals, half of the people that died in a traffic crash in the county were not wearing a seat belt. That's the number-one thing, that if we could change that behavior, and that's a freebie, that doesn't cost money to go out and fix an intersection. That's convincing somebody to wear a seat belt, those numbers will come down drastically. And not picking on anybody in their age, but that is one of the emphasis areas. That's our young drivers that are inexperienced and full of life, and nothing's going to kill them. And then it's our elderly population that have vision issues and mobility issues and difficulty turning their head all the way to the side to see at an intersection whether it's safe to pull out or not. Tara mentioned the vision, striving for zero deaths, one is too many. This falls right in line with the commitment that ADOT has made and the Federal Highway Administration has made, the Vision Zero Commitment, that folks should not be dying on our roads, especially for a mistake that they might make. And then the goal there of reducing the fatal and serious injuries by 20% over the next five years.
Steve?
Yes? Go ahead.
So we talked about I-10 and I-8, another I, but it's a state, it's ADOT. How about Highway 60, which dominates my district? What are the fatalities on 60, say between Superior and just the Pinal County portion?
Yep. So there are quite a few there on US 60, another high-speed divided freeway segment. I don't know the numbers off the top of my head. I can get those for you, and I can probably pull them here right after I speak. But there are a number of fatals on US 60. You're correct. And there's a lot going on on these interstate fatal crashes. You know, it's the high speeds, it's the folks that, you know, are driving impaired or inattentive or sleepy.
Way more big rigs.
Yep. Large trucks, large vehicles. And then not anticipating the slowdown and stops that we see on these. I mean, these freeways are designed for us to be going 75, and if you're not paying attention, especially in the rush hour, morning and evening, say you're from out of town and don't realize it, you come upon a stopped condition without any warning a lot of times.
Steve, where do those dust storms always occur? Is that Pinal County or is that beyond?
Yeah, that's down by, close to the Pecacho area. And there's an old dry lake basically out there where the dust becomes elevated in minimal winds.
Yeah, just one of those pileups has got to skew these results. I mean, you have 30 or 40 wrecks in one of those.
Did they ever get that warning system up and running down there?
I thought ADOT did have that, but the dust warning system down around Pecacho on I-10.
And then it runs a variable speed limit there, too.
Right.
So if the dust storm comes up, it says, hey, you know, go 40 or whatever.
Yeah. Yep. But you're right, there are a number of fatals on US 60 there in these valleys.
Thank you.
And right at the Gila River, there's a lot of dust storms from time to time, too.
So next couple of slides, we'll go look at the hotspots. So we did what's called network screening, a deeper dive into the crash data. And these were based on crash frequency, so how many crashes are occurring at intersections, and the severity of those crashes, specifically giving higher weight to fatal and serious injuries. So this will be the top 20 list countywide, based on those five years, remember, from 2018 through 2022. Number one on the list, we can all agree, it's getting fixed. It's been at the top or in the top 20 for several years, and ADOT has a signal going in there. In fact, I drove through it this morning, the temporary signal's out there. Soon we'll have the permanent signal up and running at 87 and Scousen. So that one's being taken care of. But you can see the county has, you know, five or six locations here, actually four. A lot of ADOT, as we already mentioned, intersections with ADOT, where ADOT would be involved. We have one in Maricopa, Maricopa-Casa Grande Highway in White and Parker.
I don't see 347.
So these are the intersections. You're right, so none of the...
They're just intersections?
Yep.
Just intersections?
Yep.
White and Parker, really? Because, I mean, that's got a light there. That's why I'm a little surprised.
Well, and a lot of the signalized intersections do have higher crash frequencies. Typically, the severities will come down. So with this one, and I'd have to look back at the numbers, there must have been at least a fatal and probably a couple of serious injuries that drove that one into the top 20. And depending on how long the light's been out there, I think it's been out there a while, but if it, okay, so it was signalized during this whole five-year period.
Okay.
If 347 and rigs must be in Maricopa County?
Yep.
It's in Maricopa County.
Yeah, okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Number three in the state? Oh, nice.
Yep. We're going to blame the bulk of the issues on Maricopa County.
Yeah.
You guys don't have to worry about it. So here would be the corridors or segments on these corridors. And yeah, number one on the list is a section of 347 there. Again, ADOT very, very highly represented in these corridors. And then a handful there within unincorporated Pinal County. Any questions or anybody who wants some more detail on any of these locations?
Sure. Question. So number three there, 79 and 77, to four-tenths of a mile west of SR7, so right there at that bottom end where it's a 45 mile an hour speed limit to 65 or 100 or whatever people run on there.
Yep. I think that's it, yeah. Yep.
Interesting. I drive it every day, so I was like, hmm.
Yeah. Be extra careful next time you...
Today.
Then as part of the network screening, there's a couple of intersections and segment screening tools, and these are really nice if anybody within, not just the county, but the local agencies, the tribal nations, they have access to this, and they can go in and change the weighting and how they prioritize. So the way the screening is set up, you can look at crash frequency and severity, but also crash rate, which is the number of crashes per the traffic volume, divided by the traffic volume on that intersection or segment. And you can give different weights. If you think severity should be the highest rated, you can go in and change it in this tool and say, hey, 75% of the score is going to be based on severity only, and only 25% on frequency. So these are nice, easy-to-use tools that especially data nerds within the agencies might want to jump into these and look at them.
Is this on our website? I see our logo on there. Is this part of our website?
No.
Oh, it's not.
It's shared.
Please come up to the microphone.
Sorry.
Yeah.
That's a great question, Supervisor Goodman, Mr. Chairman. It is shared with all of our local agencies. We don't publish it on the website because the data continuously is changing, right? I mean, it's already outdated as soon as we started the study, because ADOT now has additional information available that we're not utilizing for this study. So, but the tools are available to our police departments, Sheriff Department, DPS, and all of our cities and towns in the county.
And another feature with these tools is you can pull just the data for your location. So city of Casa Grande is only interested in their top 20. They can go in and just look at their top 20 here.
Is this something that, if that's okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this something, does our sheriff department access this stuff already? Are they looking at this or do you know?
I doubt it, and they may not be aware of it. I doubt it, and they may not be aware of it.
Okay, oh, my mic's off.
Supervisor Goodman, Chairman Miller, we did have several representatives from the Sheriff's Department that was part of our technical advisory committee. So, they are aware of the information and do have access to the tools. Whether or not they're utilizing it, you know, I don't have any idea of that, but it is available. I know the City of Casa Grande Police Department was utilizing this, these tools to look at hotspots for areas of, so, but we will, you know, we'll make sure we get it out to those technical advisory committees again. And Mike's going to talk a little bit about this later. Part of the Safe Streets for All requirements, there needs to be a safety committee. And the county has asked that we lead that effort. And so, the Sheriff's Department and all the cities and towns and the county will continuously be working together and will be updating this information and the tools for them.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I just wanted to ask, would you say over the, since this is only done since '22, in the past two years going on the third year, would you say that this is probably, some of the deaths and all the accidents would be up by 10%, 15%? I mean, just the ballpark, because the numbers definitely have grown because the population has grown tremendously. So, just curious.
They have grown. Excuse me. I don't know what the, so, right now, the ADOT database is current through 2023 and our cutoff was 2022. So, I do know statewide, the numbers in '23 were the second highest in the history of tracking fatal crashes, 1,300 fatals in 2023 in Arizona. So, my guess is that it was a similar increase here in the county. A percentage, probably a 5% to 10% increase would be my guess.
So, probably the same in '24?
Probably. Well, actually, preliminary numbers nationwide and even coming out of ADOT are showing that there's been a slight decrease. I don't think that we can stand up and, you know, congratulate, anybody can say we're doing better. I think it's just the numbers randomly go up and down. But over the last several years, yes, they've been steadily rising.
Yeah, because also you've got to remember, you know, '20 to '22, you had COVID, so people weren't on the road, but the numbers seem to still grow. So, I'm going to have to assume those numbers from '22 to '24 probably could be close to double based on the fact that, percentage-wise, I shouldn't say double, probably percentage has gone up even higher because of less people on the road in those two years.
So, I did some quick numbers here really quick for you because I had a feeling this question was going to be coming up. And so, and we should have included a slide on this. So, when we completed the safety study for Pinal County in 2019, we had a total of 530 fatals. So, if we go back to the slide for the very beginning, we are now at 360 fatals. And Mike, jump in if I'm, because I'm just, what's that?
That was for 10 years, though.
Oh, that was for 10 years. Okay, good catch, thank you. I didn't look at that. So, it, because, yes, the requirement allowed us at that time to do 10 years of data versus the... So, we'll have to do some analysis on that because I'm curious. Because, you know, we should have done that in the beginning to see if we've decreased the amount of fails and serious injury crashes since our 2019 study. So, we'll take a look at that and do a little deeper dive, but that's a great question.
Yeah, when you look at the numbers in that 10-year period, which was, I think, ended in 2016, so I think it was 2007 to 2016 for the previous county plan, the average was about 50, 50 fatal crashes a year. So, now, in this five-year period, it's around, it's 60 or so, 60, 65. So, the numbers have definitely gone up. And it's not just in the county, it's statewide, it's nationally, you're right. And a lot of that is driven by population growth, more drivers on the road. But still, bottom line is more people are dying out there, even with all the good things that are being done, all the improvements that are being made. So, those five emphasis areas, we came up with safety strategies for each of those emphasis areas. And we looked at a few different things. Here's some of the key sources that were used, federal highways, 28 proven safety countermeasures. NITS, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, puts out a countermeasures that work that gets more to the soft side as opposed to infrastructure improvement. So, it looks at enforcement and education types of strategies. The crash modification factors, Clearinghouse has good information that we used. So, we categorize those strategies based on the four Es of traffic safety, engineering enforcement, education, emergency response. We also, that first sentence up there, safe system approach, that was utilized. This is something that Federal Highway has been preaching for the last several years that basically looks at five elements and improving those five elements, making sure we have safe roads, safe speeds, safe users, safe vehicles, and the post-crash care is as good as it can be. And we utilize those in the strategies. Is there a question?
No, I just, you know, I think, let's be real here, in our particular area, we don't have a whole lot of enforcement because of the minimal amount of officers that we have policing that area. And that is a big factor that we need over in that particular neck of the woods. Is over there, I don't know where Supervisor Sertie's situation is, but I would assume it's probably the same for most of us here. The lack of officers out there to enforce some of this. And so, that's why I was asking if our, and that's a conversation that our new sheriff and I have had numerous conversations about on this next budget or go-around, is what are we going to do to help entice other officers to come here to help us in this need? So, anyway, just a comment more than anything.
Well, and it's an excellent comment, and you're right. Again, nationally, we do not have the enforcement resources to be out there enforcing speed limits and red light running, and it's a huge issue. I will say, I'll say something and then be quiet about it because I know it's controversial, but photo enforcement is a proven safety countermeasure. When we can't have officers out there patrolling and ticketing folks that are speeding, photo enforcement gets the job done and it has proven safety benefits to it. The other thing with enforcement is when we are doing enforcement, if the tickets for not wearing a seatbelt don't hit people in the wallet, they're going to keep not wearing their seatbelts. So, we may have to look at some of, from the legal side of things, on how to improve traffic safety out there and bring these numbers down. So, for those five emphasis areas, we came up with right around 100 safety strategies, again, following those, that four E, and this is just a sample on the speeding issue, some of the recommendations that are in there. So, from an engineering standpoint, installing those speed feedback signs that we see occasionally, that flash folks speed at them as they're... And this does have a safety benefit. A lot of times, people will ignore them, but the conscientious, conscientious driver who just wasn't paying attention, maybe they're coming down a hill and didn't realize they're going 10 or 15 over the speed, see this sign flashing at them and they'll slow down. From an education standpoint, the fencing driving courses, especially for our younger drivers.
I would say into your statement about the awareness part, I think the majority of people is that right there. They're not conscious of what's, what speed limit they're actually going on. And if they see those flashers going on, they have, they'll slow down just because they're just unaware. I speak from experience on that, by the way. Is my attorney over there going like this?
TMI.
And then just the example on the right there, that's pulled from those 28 proven safety countermeasures. You know, research for years and years has shown these things work that are listed in that, you know, putting rumble strips out there on our rural road shoulders and centerlines.
The one thing I don't see on here is, especially on the 347, a lot of two-lane roads, the biggest problem is people hanging out in the left-hand lane opposed to being in the right-hand lane. So, shouldn't that be one of those signs that should be here? You know, move over stupid or whatever you want to put the verbiage as? My point being is we tend to, we tend to hang on their butts to hopefully they move over, driving the same speed limit as the person next to them. And if we had those signs, I think that would be a big help. And not just the sign, but the flashing around it and maybe with an arrow pointing like this.
I want to hear this answer.
He's trying to pick stupid is what he's trying to do, yeah.
And you're right, I mean, that does lead to some of our road rage incidents when somebody is, they're in that passing lane, they're probably just doing the speed limit and somebody wants to get around them and they're flashing their lights and riding their bumper and whipping in and out. You're right, and there are signs that can be posted out there, whether or not people will obey them. But there are signs, use left lane only for passing and things like that. We see signs also, no large trucks in the, you know, far left lane. So, yes, there are some signing things that can be done in those situations. So, various strategies are included and processes within the safety plan to implement those strategies and to make sure that we're doing things to drive those fatal and serious injury crash numbers down. So, just highlighting a few of the things here, making sure that safety is an explicit part of the project development process. And Sun Corridor does this, a lot of agencies, cities, counties do this. They give a scoring number to how is this new project, this signal going in at 87 and Scousen, how is it going to improve safety? And if it does, it gets 10 extra points in the project development process and it moves up the list. So, making sure that safety is considered on all new projects. Different policies and processes that could either be incorporated or updated. Complete streets, which is basically, hey, when we've got a project out there, we're building or widening Hunt Highway, whatever it might be, it's for all road users. It's going to be a complete street that helps address not only drivers, but pedestrians and bicyclists, folks in wheelchairs trying to get across six and eight lanes of high-speed traffic. It'll be a complete street that all road users can benefit from. Active transportation plans, which specifically looks at pedestrian and safety, or pedestrian bicyclist safety concerns. RSA, Road Safety Assessments, ADOT's got a great program. It's a free program, they'll come out, they'll, actually, now they use their consultants for the most part, they'll send a consultant team out who will pull in law enforcement and engineers and planners and elected officials to look at a specific intersection or segment and come up with why is this an unsafe location and what can we do about it? And we'll come up with those four E recommendations for a specific location. An annual safety performance report, and this is a requirement for SS4A, and it can be as little as just posting your annual crash numbers. This year, we had 61 fatal crashes in the county. Next year, a year from now, reporting that number again. But keeping track of, you know, kind of the discussion we had a few minutes ago, are we doing better or worse than 10 years ago from a crash standpoint? Having a fatal crash team that's put together, and again, law enforcement, engineers, planners, elected officials that will go out and if not, look at every single fatal crash, all 60 of those that are occurring every year. At least we'll look at some of those fatal crashes within a few days after the crash occurs. Go out and look at the site, figure out, is there a big tree there that's blocking the view of the signal as you're approaching it? Let's get out there and see what's going on. And then Irene mentioned a safety committee. This is another requirement of SS4A, that you have a committee that will meet regularly, probably quarterly, and see what you're doing good, what you're failing at in terms, not you, but the safety plan itself. What's getting implemented, what do we still need to work on?
Do we have, do we have one of those now? We don't?
A safety committee or the fatal crash team or both?
Either or all.
I am not aware that the county and maybe our sheriff folks that I saw in the back might know more than me that whether or not the county has a fatal crash team that goes out.
Okay, I see Chris back there shaking his head, nada.
So, the sheriff committee members that were part of the technical advisory committee were very interested in trying to implement that. And I do know, like, the City of Casa Grande, they do have a fatal crash team that meets and goes out and looks at all crashes. We asked some of the other cities and towns if they had them and nobody has them. So, it's definitely going to be a recommendation that we put forth, you know, that's part of the study.
Okay.
And Chairman Supervisor Goodman, yeah, I'd like to also answer that. My office is also in the process of hiring a team, a fatal crash team, so that we can respond to these and answer any of the board's questions with respect to that. So, we are on this, we understand that there is a major issue, and we need, we do need to bring in that talent here in my office and also in the sheriff's office. So, we have plans that we will be submitting to the board in our next budget with respect to this.
Well, thank you, thank you for that information. Yeah, and that can get back to the Sun Corridor and all these people. We can report that type of information better to them.
Yeah, and I will say, and I think we're all aware of this, a lot of those fatals, yeah, we can do some things out there from an engineering standpoint, but when you start looking at the fatal crash reports, the speeding, you know, going 100 miles an hour, the impaired driving, the inattention, being on the phone, a lot of behaviors that are kind of outside of what we can do from an engineering perspective to make it safer out there. But what we can do as engineers and planners is make it as safe as possible so that when that driver isn't paying attention and they drift off the road, instead of rolling over, they hit a rumble strip and it jolts them back into paying attention and back on the road. So, the big part of the implementation plan was coming up with potential projects. And this was based on, you know, the crash data analysis, the stakeholder feedback, the comments that we received on the surveys. Again, nearly 100 projects were put together with high-level scoping, planning-level scoping and cost estimates. You can kind of see the breakdown here by agency. But these are projects that are really set up for those agencies to immediately go after some of that SS4A implementation funding, this next round. And they haven't said when it's going to come out, it's usually in the spring. And the agency usually has a couple of months to put their grant application together. But you're set up with projects already to go after that billion dollars' worth of funding. Just a couple of samples of the projects that are in the plan. So, these would be spot, spot location projects. So, in Coolidge at 287 and Vaca In Road, getting signal backplates, improving the left turn signal phasing, adding some intersection lighting out there. In Casa Grande at 287 and Hacienda, either installing a traffic signal or a roundabout. Some systemic project examples from the plan. Systemic being it, you would apply a certain improvement to more than one location. So, it could be on multiple roads or at multiple intersections along a single corridor. Couple of examples we have here are in AJ on a couple of the roads, on Superstition Boulevard and State Route 88, to put those speed feedback signs in. On Hunt Highway and on SR 587, install intersection lighting at a few intersections.
Do you, do you take the information after you've done the improvement, analyze the decrease in accidents or, I mean, is there a check and balance to see that our ROI is really working? I mean, I'm just curious.
So, this plan did not do that, and that should be done with projects. And in fact, with the HSIP funding, that is a requirement that a few years after the improvement is made, that agency, let's say it's the county, put in a new signal, they are supposed to provide back to ADOT a before and after analysis to do exactly what you just said. Hey, we spent a million bucks on this signal, did the crashes come down? Did the fatal numbers come down? Did it get worse? Hopefully, it didn't get worse with the improvement, but you're right, that should be done. And it is a requirement of that federal HSIP funding.
Yeah, and then the increase in volume of traffic and patterns change. I mean, everybody looks for the path of least resistance. And so, I mean, there's a lot of factors into something like that. And so, I mean, there's a lot of factors into something like that.
Yep. Good point. So now I want to highlight some of the great successes that came out of the Sun Corridor MPO, the county, local agencies over the last few years in using the HSIP funding that, again, flows through ADOT. Just wanted to show you what's been going on in the county here. So prior to 2018, well, let me back up. In 2018, the HSIP funding became a competitive process where any agency could go after the funding and you got a score based on your benefit cost analysis. And the highest-ranked projects got funded. Prior to 2018, each of the MPOs and COGS were given an allotment of safety funds, usually no more than a half a million dollars a year. Not a whole lot of money. So this first slide was using some of that half a million dollars a year before it was competitive. And that's just within the Sun Corridor MPO region. So basically, Coolidge, Casa Grande, Eloy and a part of the county. And you can see the projects, some of the projects that came out of that. So about two and a half million dollars' worth of projects over those few years.
Do we, what other, we've got Sun Corridor. Is MAG factored in any of this or are they separate when it comes to and then CAG itself?
This is Sun Corridor.
This is all, this is just Sun Corridor's study?
I thought this was everybody.
This is everybody?
First time I did it, it was just Sun Corridor.
Because I know, we work a lot with MAG, you know, up on the northern part.
So this study, the 2019 study that we conducted and this study today includes all the planning agencies.
Okay. I thought you mentioned that, but I just wanted to make sure.
So what we're showing here is when the MPO was first formed, I received just a little over $500,000 a year of highway safety improvement funding to do safety projects. So this, the first few slides here you're going to see is just the funding that was allocated to the Sun Corridor MPO. CAG and MAG, I believe, had their own separate allocations at that time. And so this is just kind of highlighting a little bit of history from the MPO's perspective of what we've done. So I'm not sure, you know, the CAG and the MAG safety study did not identify specific projects in their study where, and that was kind of where some of the disconnect was, where our study did. And so that was kind of one reason the county came and said, help, you know, help us. Not only did the vision and goals not align, their studies did not identify specific projects that they could qualify for highway safety improvement funding. So now that we're doing a countywide one, we're covering all of that.
Okay. So whenever we come to funding mechanisms, we can go to CAG and the MAG with this kind of data, is that right, Leo?
It's being shared with them.
It's being shared with them now. Because I know MAG's out there doing something right now for us.
Yeah. They're part of our technical advisory committee. This is definitely a partnership between all three planning agencies. And any of the projects that we, we're going to get to a slide for the 24 projects that were submitted, or there was $20 million worth. Any of those that fall within the MAG region are submitted by MAG for highway safety improvement funding. Any that fall within my jurisdiction are submitted by us and the same for CAG.
Okay.
And then ADOT as well, okay, for those ADOT facilities.
I think that's one of the things that is probably confusing to the public as a whole, I know it was for me, was that we've got three different agencies when it comes to our transportation and the safety issues and things of that nature, that I think we're pretty unique in that area, aren't we? As far as the county, we've got three different AGs that we go through, MAGs, PAGs, whatever. But three different federal, you know, that we can get federal money from, you know, assist us in that. So anyway, thank you.
This is just showing the early years.
Yeah.
This is 10 years ago.
Yeah.
Before they combined.
Before, okay, okay. I should have just asked you.
So Sun Corridor MPO did a SC MPO safety plan back in 2016. And again, it would just concentrate on Eloy, Coolidge, Casa Grande and part of the county. And these were the HSIP projects that came out of that. So a little over a million dollars for three projects there within the MPO boundaries back So from the 2019 county safety plan, you had quite a bit of projects that were not only submitted, but were funded, just under $10 million worth of projects. And this is where, as Irene was saying, so the first two in AJ, those would have come out of MAG. MAG would have ultimately submitted those to ADOT, but they came out of the county plan that the MPO funded. They were identified and actually the applications put together as part of that plan and then MAG submitted it. So a lot of good safety projects have been funded and either have already been constructed or will be constructed here within the county. A lot of good things going on. In '22, Sun Corridor MPO funded some additional HSIP applications. $15 million worth of projects were selected out of that round within the MPO boundaries within the county. And you can see some of them are ADOT projects. So a couple of sections of '79 are getting passing lanes out there for just over $6 million worth of funding. And then Irene mentioned, just submitted 10 applications on the current HSIP cycle. And again, some of those were submitted by MAG, but again, identified as part of this county safety plan. Still waiting to hear back on most of those. Hopefully several of those will get funded, but $20 million worth of applications were submitted last May. So totaling all that up, 28 million, say $29 million worth of projects have been funded from HSIP applications within the county over the past 10 years or so for 31 different projects. Still waiting to hear back on those 10 projects and $20 million worth of funding this round. So let's say you hit all 10 of those projects that are in, you're just under $50 million worth of projects over the last few years from that federal HSIP funds, which is great. I don't think any other county or MPO or COG in the state can make that claim. And these last few, just wanted to highlight some of those projects that were funded by HSIP. So Casa Grande got a hawk in there at Cottonwood and Codota to address a fatal pedestrian crash. That was about a $360,000 project. There in Coolidge at 87 and Ruins Drive, a traffic signal went in. That one was just under 900, or just over $800,000 and that was to address angle and left-turn crashes there at that intersection. This is one of my favorites. It was a countywide stop sign project, installing the stop signs that have the flashers, the LED flashers around the border of the stop sign. So 13 different intersections within the county. And it wasn't just all county intersections, the Gila River Indian Community, well, you can see them listed there. Several of the local agencies received these. And that was just right at $400,000. A fairly small project, but it's addressing 13 locations that had five fatal angle crashes at those intersections.
Yep. So those signs are $30,000 each?
Okay.
I'm just taking the money and dividing it by 13 and it comes out to roughly 30. That's $30,000? I'm in the wrong business.
If you look at it that way, you are correct, sir. However, with HSIP, with federal funding, there are a lot of additional, let's say, cost elements. Admin, ADOT admin and ADOT review and let's just say there's a lot of cost above and beyond actually purchasing those stop signs. I'm with you, though. That's a high amount.
That's the part that frustrates the crud out of me, is that we've got to go through these different agencies that take their piece of it and it's ridiculous. And, you know, and I think about when we hit a half a million in population, that puts us in a whole different category. Is that right, Leo? When it comes to this kind of stuff?
Chairman, I think I'd let the experts comment on that, but are you getting at a, from an ADOT perspective, is that what you're getting at on as a board seat?
Yeah, I think of City of Mesa, you know, when they hit a half a million, they were able to circumvent some of the other processes to be able to get federal dollars to assist them in their roads and the infrastructure.
I think there's certain certifications and processes that we can go through that would help us streamline and lead agencies on some of that, as far as federal certifications for receiving those funds that we're exploring. But again, I think the experts probably have a better answer than I do.
I want to make a quick comment. The public loves these things. I mean, I've got people wanting them at every four-way stop in the United States. I mean, they love them so much. So they do catch everybody's eye.
Yeah.
So just on that, we had some installed, we had an RSA up in Oracle. Said, oh, you need to put these stop signs in. So we did and then the people complained, oh my gosh, they're too bright. Take them out.
Oh my gosh. I haven't had that problem.
Oh, no. I've had that.
Well, and just to think about, if you have a four-way stop, there's a total of eight signs going in, okay? So you've got the four stop signs plus the signs that are warning you and you have the stop sign ahead as well. So, you know, and with the federal process, you know, you have your environment, even though you're maybe just replacing a sign, there's still environmental utility clearances and other clearances that are federally required. We've tried to streamline that process as much as possible, you know, but trust me, it was quite cumbersome just to get these stop signs done. It took several years, I believe, to be able to do this. And with ADOT's assistance from the South Central District, we were able just to procure them through them and get them installed. So as far as, you know, streamlining the process, the federal process is a federal process, whether you're a certified agency. Pima County is a certified acceptance, they call them certified acceptance agency, where you can bid and advertise and do your own procurements through the federal process. Does it save time funding? I don't know that it really, maybe time because you, instead of ADOT advertising a project for you, you have the authority to be able to do that. But it's, you know, it's a process to go through ADOT to be a certified acceptance agency. And, you know, we can always talk about that in the future.
And I understand that. It's just that what's frustrating for me is I look at the money that was allocated for the 24, for instance, and it's going through ADOT and ADOT takes their portion, their administrative portion, that is just, it's ridiculous to me that we have these layers of government. I think that's the part that's frustrating to a lot of people, rather than just, I look at all, a lot of our, that we, the grants that we get from ADOT, that our sheriff's department gets for safety and things of that nature. Why can't that just be turned over to our sheriff's department or to the county to be able to? And we wouldn't have those type of layers of government that takes their portion of it to justify their positions. And so, you know, being in this for as long as I've been in it, not as long as you, brother, but still, it gets frustrating to see all these different layers and what can be done to help streamline that and eliminate some of the costs involved with that. So, anyway, I've made my rant now, so I'm good.
We don't get to make the rules.
No, we don't. It's unfortunate.
I would say that...
They don't listen to us either, either, so.
Even if we did, huh?
Yeah.
This specific project is the type of project that would be a lot more efficient to not go through HSIP funding. And the reason 13 different intersections were added was to make it a large enough to meet the minimum requirements.
Yeah. And you probably, we probably, because we did that many, it made a difference on how the dollars, there was dollars more available to do 13 of them. I get that.
Yeah. Yeah, this would be an ideal project for a local agency to just set aside a bucket of money every year, because there's no, really no engineering planning involved. You're just putting in a few signs, solar-powered signs. Set aside a pot of money and every year we're going to go out to, you know, six different intersections and put these up with using our own funding.
I know it was a game changer on Quell Run and Bella Vista when they put this up, when they did the flashing lights, you know, the signage.
There it is.
And it was a game changer, a lot less accidents at that particular corner, for instance, but.
People do love them and the four-ways aren't a problem. The problem is where one is, they feel like they're equal roads, but one doesn't stop and one does. There's a lot of fatalities. I think they've saved lives already in my area.
Yeah.
And that's actually the type of intersections that this project hit. It wasn't the all-way stops. It was the two-way stops where these were installed. Yep. Now, on the bright side of these types of projects, it didn't cost any of those agencies anything. This was 100% federally funded, no match required on these. So they did get free stop signs, but you're right, it's extremely expensive for this type of project.
Still frustrating. We could have put another five of them if it went, the different layers, I bet, so. Or 100 of them, yeah.
Apache Junction, got a street lighting project on the Apache Trail and Superstition Boulevard. This was a $2.4 million project that addressed four fatal nighttime crashes. And then the last one here, again, just south of Apache Junction there, on Ironwood, $2 million paved shoulder project with rumble strips to address a runoff road fatality.
It's going to take a while to, for everybody to get, replace their vehicles, but if you buy a new vehicle, they have technology now that if you get to the, it kind of brings you back. It's like rumble strips that are built in. It's kind of unnerving at first, you're like, what happened, you know?
Control.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. There are a lot of new safety features on the newer vehicles. Just in wrapping up here, the next steps, we're currently, just started the 30-day public comment period for the safety plan report. Already received a couple of comments on that. Looking to get executive board, Sun Corridor MPO executive board approval in March and hoping to get a county board of supervisors' resolution of support in April. Don't know if you wanted to add anything to this, Irene. Was there anything we wanted to add to the, on the resolution?
So this study will be adopted by the Sun Corridor MPO executive board. We just felt that if we have a resolution of support from the county supervisors, it would be helpful, especially for any of the cities and towns, you know, outside of my jurisdiction that may be pursuing the safe streets for all funding. And so we'll, you know, work with Tara in getting that drafted and bringing it to the board sometime in April for consideration.
Okay. Is it okay if we share this with our cities and towns or you would prefer not to?
This is public record now.
Absolutely. You're free. If anybody, you know...
I know, but I mean...
If we could do, update a couple of slides, because a couple of things have changed and send it out to you since, you know, since we put this together and submitted it, we would be happy to do that. So, and we do have two more public events that we are going to be doing. We will be going to the Lost Dutchman Days and having a booth with Pinell County there for the public to comment. And also the third, that was in February, I believe it's February 21st. Okay. And then the February 22nd, we're going to be doing... 22nd? No, you've got the dates reversed. The 21st is Friday downtown Florence. We're going to have a booth there. And then also the Lost Dutchman Days on the 22nd. So February 22nd, I apologize. And so we have, you know, and we are, we've also received a couple more additional comments from the public on this as well. And we will be addressing and making sure all those comments are included within the study from the general public. And so, and we have found by going to where the people are and not just hosting at a council chamber or a library or someplace else like that, but actually going to events where the public is at, we have been very successful in getting comments from the public with them to draw on maps or whatever, whatever the case may be. So we appreciate your comments and feedback, so please let me know how we can help you.
Okay. Any other questions? I know it's probably a little lengthy, but I don't, we haven't had an update on transportation for a long time. This is, I'm glad we've done this and got us up to speed and we'll look forward to possibly doing a resolution for you in the future. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Job well done.
This may be a long one. We want a five-minute recess?
Do you need a five-minute recess?
We can do it. Okay. How long do you think this will go?
I don't think this will take too long, huh?
Okay.
What's that?
Item number two, work session?
It's just the one item. It's not all the codes. Okay.
Yeah.
We're good.
You can hold it. Everybody's good. Okay, we'll continue. Item number two on the agenda, presentation and discussion of an ordinance of the county board of supervisors relating to parking vehicles on county roadways. There we go.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of the board, Chris Watermaker, County Engineer. Today, I'll be presenting on the Pinellas County Parking Ordinance, which is a proposed regulation of parking within the public right-of-way. So, as, I'll try to make this as kind of a short presentation. The proposed ordinance, I hope you guys have a chance to look at it. It is only five pages long. So, we'll kind of go over kind of some history, why we're doing this, what, what our goals are with this ordinance, and then an overview of what the ordinance does, and then some next steps. So, about a year ago, we decided to take on the challenge of drafting a parking ordinance. We started receiving a number of complaints from residents, from HOAs, about parking problems within neighborhoods, parking of semi-trucks, parking of nuisance vehicles, things like that. And we had no real tools or mechanisms to deal with those, those types of issues. So, we said, you know what? We need to come up with an ordinance to give us the authority and those tools to deal with that. And specifically, as of right now, all we can really do is put up some no-parking signs in very select situations, and then tow a vehicle through the sheriff's office. And typically, the towing is only for really egregious situations, and it can be very challenging to do that. And another thing that, that's happened that's kind of led to us creating this ordinance is that a couple of years ago, the state legislature passed HB 2298, which was a law that basically prohibited HOAs from regulating parking within their communities, on public roads, I should say. That law came into effect October 30th, 2023. And so, for any HOAs, homeowners associations that were formed prior to the end of 2014, they have to do a vote to continue to regulate that parking. If they fail to vote, or, or vote, or the vote doesn't pass by June of this year, then those, they lose their ability to regulate the parking within their communities. And then that falls on the county. So, this again is a tool for us to address those kinds of issues. Any new subdivisions, new HOAs formed after the end of 2014, they don't have the authority to regulate parking. So, let's see here. And one of the things we tried to do with this, this ordinance is to try to take kind of a balanced approach to addressing the variety of needs and safety challenges on our public roadways. So, let's take it right here. So, we kind of modeled this ordinance after a combination of, of other ordinances, specifically looking at Pima County and Maricopa County, to see kind of what they're doing, also borrowing some language from City of Phoenix, City of Chandler, and Town of Queen Creek. We also, as part of our review process, it was reviewed by the, the sheriff's office, our attorney's office, code compliance team, and the rest of development services. They also talked about this ordinance and presented it to several different HOAs at three different meetings, and also received direct feedback from eight members of the public. So, what you see in this five-page ordinance is the culmination of all those reviews over the last 12 months. So, let's see here. So, what this ordinance does is it establishes the authority of this board and the county engineer to establish no parking zones and install no-parking signs on the basis of engineering or traffic studies to address specifically safety concerns. It also establishes a process for which residents within neighborhoods can establish a no-parking zone on their street. So, it's going to be similar to what we do with traffic calming. So, a group of residents on a particular street could get together and say, hey, we don't want parking on our street. For whatever reason, they can go through this process, and we can do that, and it'd be legally enforceable. It also prohibits heavy trucks, like semi-trucks, tractor trailers, tractor trailers and things like that, within residentially zoned areas, so within basically subdivisions and neighborhoods. It also provides prohibition of parking of recreational vehicles and inoperable vehicles on any public road for more than 48 consecutive hours.
Mr. Chair, quick question.
Go ahead.
Well, I forgot my question. Have you, so this, this will put a stop to some of those things that we've got going on in Arizona City? I mean, we've talked about this.
Yeah, it'll give us, again, some tools and ability to deal with those. And so, like, I'll have on this next slide here.
But back up one more. So, the people on the street that would say, oh, I'd like to have this a no-parking street, do they have to get the consent of all their neighbors on the street, or is it a majority rule, like, oh, six out of 10 could say, yeah, we want this, and the other four are like, wait a minute, we don't, you know?
That was a question I was going to ask.
Yeah.
For the public's benefit, what's going on in Maricopa?
In Arizona City?
Yeah.
Oh, semis parked on the road, you know, by homes blocking the intersection view, and then, you know, the deputies have gone out and talked to them, say, yeah, we'll move it to another side of the street. Then it's facing the wrong way on the road, and then, you know, it's just people parking big things all over the street.
Yeah, I believe we've had three people now that have been on city councils, and this was a problem. A lot of people are independent truckers. They don't have any place to park their big rig.
It is an issue.
Where it gets to be a problem is they're leaving at 5:00 in the morning, so they go out at 4:00 in the morning and start it up and let it idle for an hour. And it's just an annoyance to the other people there. And then it crushes the shoulder, too, eventually.
Mr. Chairman, I-
I have a, well, I have a quick question on the, on the residential zoning, because you could be GR acre and a quarter, two-acre lot, since that's a residential zone. So, you wouldn't, and I mean, I've, I see that all over this county, where they have their, their rigs at their house and stuff like that. So, that would, they wouldn't be allowed to do that.
Chairman, yeah, that's correct. The way this ordinance is written, any residentially zoned area, they would not be able to park a semi-truck like that.
The GR is a residential, isn't it?
That's correct.
But on the street, so if they park it on their lot, that's fine. But if they park it on the street, that would be-
Well, I don't know. I'm just, I'd like clarity on that.
If that's something-
Not what it's saying.
That's something we, we can, we can change this. This is a work session. So, if that's something that, that you would like to see maybe an exemption for, then I could take that into consideration.
I mean, truly, I mean, these folks that have an acre and a quarter or larger, lots of them do, a lot of those folks run businesses out of their trucks. I mean, on, on the way here, you know, every morning, I can tell you, I can just show you half a dozen spots that I think would be in violation if this ordinance was in place. I don't think they're hurting anybody. I don't know if anybody even complaining about it. So, but I'm just kind of curious.
It's an issue over in our area.
Is it?
Yeah, big. And so, we've been talking a lot about these things, and, and the trucking. We, we've seen a lot of our, and, you know, I don't want to hurt the livelihood of any individual, really. And we have a lot of truckers that are in our, in the Santa Valley area. They, they have found a more central location that they park now, which is along Hunt Highway, off to the side on, on state land, up in that area. And then down in our, in my district, they're right off of Schneff Road, and they, they line up on Schneff Road, which that would be an issue here. But-
Yeah, but-
To somebody's point earlier, Supervisor Sertie said that at 5:00, 4:00, or 5:00 o'clock in the morning, they're starting their trucks up, and there's a residential home right there by them. So, and if we could find a way, Steve, that I think as a county, we've got property all over the county, that if we could structure some kind of a parking area, central area, for some of these truck drivers, I think that would be an answer to some of the, there's a, there's a HOA-
I totally get it. I just wonder practicality of whether they will take advantage of it. I mean, it's just-
You know, it-
Hard to enforce, I think, is the thing.
Well, that's part of the problem here, is that Home Depot, that the lot there, we had so many trucks that were parking there, that we had to get with, it was private land, so we had to be able to post no parking there. And we had, I bet we had 50 trucks parked there, which was, and again, back to my point, I don't want to see us hurt some of the industry of, of some of these homeowners there, but at the same time, we've got to look at the practicality of all of this.
I understand.
We, our subdivisions that we have in Santa Valley are so narrow, those roads, and that we've had for years, individuals that have RVs parked on the road, and they park them there because they can't, they don't, whether they can afford it or not, they don't take them to a storage unit to put them there. And they're out on the road, and they've been out on the road for some time. And this has been a huge, big, big problem for a lot of us in that area.
That area as well. And that, that's a safety concern in, just in my eyes.
Yeah, I, like, to your point, fire departments.
But back, back to the, back to the residential zoning, I think, I think we need to really kind of define that a little differently in, in some way.
Okay.
Only because I think that there's, there are scenarios where it's not a problem, and they should be allowed. I understand that, that we should have, it'd be nice to have big parking lots, but parking on state land is not a, a long-term solution.
No. But I know an HOA that actually, and I, I think it was Homachi that turned, brought this to my attention. There was an HOA that actually leased a piece of property from State Land Department to where that was, they could, it was gated, and they parked RVs up in there, and they charged them not, a minimal fee for people to park their extra vehicles and stuff in that area. And I think it was up in your neck of the woods that they did that. And so, there's, I, I think there's a lot of other alternatives that we can look at as we, and especially if we start to enforce this stuff, right? And now that we've got an opportunity to do that, that's been the biggest problem with a lot of our HOAs, and with our sheriff's department. They really haven't felt like they have had the authority to give out parking tickets in these subdivisions. And so, it's been a catch-22 for everybody. And so, I think that's one of the things-
It should be an enforcement.
Yeah.
Supervisor Sertie, I'd like to hear from you.
I apologize that I had not read the five pages like I should have, but in case citizens ask us, this is for unattended vehicles only, correct? Talking about the vendors that take over four-ways. It was interesting that on Next Door last week, a guy, windshield repair guy, actually came in, it was outrageous that an orange seller came in and took his spot, and he's been there for years. And so, they're obviously running businesses at various corners, and they fight over the choice spots, and they, so, is, is that an issue? I, I don't think we have a lot of complaints on that.
Chairman, Supervisor Sertie, we do get occasional complaints about that, that kind of stuff. And in those situations, we would do, in accordance with this ordinance, a, a traffic study and evaluate that situation specifically. And then if it is a safety issue, we could then put up no-parking signs, which would then be enforceable.
So, to your point, we're not going to be arbitrarily putting up parking, no parking. It's just that as it's requested, we do an assessment, and then we put those up, correct?
That, that's correct.
Okay.
So, Chairman, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, in the city of Maricopa, we have a 72-hour, but you can't even have a semi, a trailer. Your HOA sometimes will allow you'll call the HOA and say, look, I'm going to, I'm fixing, I'm leaving on the weekend, but I'm fixing it up for a day or two. And then the HOA is, is the one who can approve it in the city of Maricopa. Now, some of them say, no, you can't have a trailer at all. Can't even put it in your driveway. So, my question is, would this 48-hours trump the city? Because you can park a car anywhere in the city of Maricopa for 72 hours. So, would this trump that? I just-
I don't think you can. This is unincorporated.
Only unincorporated.
Unincorporated.
Okay, I just-
I have another thing to just throw out there.
Go ahead.
We just came through an election season, and the political sign people got more and more aggressive every, every cycle. And it used to be you were polite, and you kept your signs back on four-ways. But there are a lot of people that are putting them right out where you would actually pull, pull off to, to go through. And I know it's a freedom of speech thing, and you've got to be really careful about talking about where you can put signs, but a lot of them completely blocked. You can't get off because there's signs there now. So, that's another issue for another day, but it kind of ties into what we're talking about, because sometimes you need to park, you need to pull off at a four-way, and you actually couldn't get there because the signs are now out where, where they should be in the, in the actual easement. So, another discussion. Okay, okay. Any other comments? Continue.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know where we're at, but continue.
All right.
Chris knows right where-
No problem here. Okay, so, talk about enforcement. So, again, this ordinance gives the authority to the sheriff's office and our code compliance team to issue $250 citations per vehicle, or to immobilize a vehicle with a device called a boot or a barnacle, or of course, towing, which is already an option. Now, one thing to note, enforcement is expected to be complaint-driven, so we're not going to, I don't, we have no plans of being proactive and searching for violations. We don't have the staff or resources for that. There are no plans to hire any additional staff for this. Again, this is about creating the tools, additional tools for us to address complaints and nuisance parking problems throughout the county.
It gives the ability for our officers to, to react or handle the situation however they see fit.
Chairman, Supervisor, I mean, yeah, that's correct.
So, we wouldn't go on somebody's property and tow their car off of it?
No, this is for public right-of-way only.
This is public right-of-way only?
Yes.
Right.
Then that helps me. Okay.
So, if there's no other questions or, or feedback, the next steps would be to distribute physical copies, copies to all the justice courts and clerks' offices in accordance with requirements for adopting ordinances, publish a notice of hearing and newspaper of record this week, and then we hopefully come back to this board in February, February 19th, for a public hearing and for adoption. And we can, you know, make any changes that we need to, any minor changes now, and we will be able to present that version at that meeting. So, to Chairman, to your point about the GR or rural zones, looking at how can we accommodate that, that's something we can, we can add to this. And, you know, we could also have another work session if, if you feel that's necessary as well. So.
You're the guy.
I'd like to have another work session on it before we go live. I, I don't know. What was the effective date that you, that had to be?
There's no, there's no date that this has to be-
That the HOAs-
Oh, that's correct.
tie back to the HOAs.
Yeah, so the HOAs had to make a vote on their authority to regulate parking by June 30th of this year.
Oh, okay.
You know, Steve, Mr. Chair, Steve.
Same guy.
Yeah. You know, you mentioned some changes that you'd like to see, and I'd like to see those myself, just to see what kind of leeway that we're talking about here.
So, I would, I would suggest that we, everybody kind of put in anything they might want to see in the change, and bring it back for one more discussion before we publish in the newspaper.
Okay, that sounds good to me. And, and this-
We're not holding up anything, so.
Right.
Quite honestly, I think, for me, I just, if I could see some of those, what recommendations they are without, I don't know if we need to do a whole work session on it.
I would want to present it back to, to us and the public-
Okay.
-one more time before we-
Cool.
And this-
And before we send it to the, physically to the jail, justice courts and stuff.
All right.
Let's get it closer to a finished copy.
The, the one thing we should definitely look at is warnings first, because no one's going to read these in the newspaper. No one's going to read them on the internet. So, maybe those stickers that don't have to take 20 minutes to scrape off or put on their window.
That ruin your windshield?
Yes.
I would, I would tell you, once we come up with this, and we distribute it out to the HOAs especially, they're going to be tickled pink about this, and they're going to make sure that the message gets out. So, they're going to help get that message out.
Okay.
You good, Chris?
Yeah, I appreciate the feedback. We'll work on some revisions and come back for another work session. And-
Thank you, Mr. Watermaker.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I move to three, executive session. I have motion to go into exec session.
Mr. Chair, I move we recess the, what is this, the work session, special session of the Board of Supervisors, and open executive session.
Second, that.
The motion is second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it.
Aye? Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Along with a potty break.
Session of the Board of Supervisors.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. Brings us to item number six on the agenda. Approval, disapproval of authorizing county manager or his designee to execute a resolution of the Board of Supervisors retaining appointment of and employ a civil hearing officer. Any discussion? There we go. There we go.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Chairman Miller, Vice Chairman McClure, members of the Board of Supervisors, Darren Gary with the Pinellas County Attorney's Office, here to present item number six. This is a resolution which effectively does three things. One, it authorizes the county manager or the county manager's designee the authority to designate a hearing officer for purposes of hearing appeals under ARS 11832. Second, it adopts initial hearing rules for the procedure to take place, the hearing procedure. And three, it allows the county manager or the county manager's designee the authority to amend those rules in the future. And this basically just sets forth the structure for the county to comply with the requirements of 11832 to provide an administrative appeal mechanism for individuals, property owners, who believe they've been aggrieved by way of a government exaction or taking as set forth in 11832. And I'm here to answer any questions the board might have.
Do we have any questions on this item? Hearing none? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item six as presented.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, say nay. Ayes have it. I believe this meeting is adjourned.